All right. Great, good evening, everybody. If we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. All right. For our recognition tonight, we are recognizing Jessica, who has served the past two years on this board and is now our outgoing member, and this is her last board meeting, so we'd like to say thank you for your years of service here on the board. Oops. Thank you so much for serving. We appreciate it, and we wish you luck.
Thank you very much, Jessica. Appreciate it.
Now, you have a lot more time on your hands on the first and third Monday of every month.
You're watching TV, too.
Yes. Absolutely. Well, thank you so much, and we're sorry to see you go, but I know... Thank you. Thank you for all your contributions over the past two years. We appreciate them.
Thank you.
We will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Shannon. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jerry. Any discussion? Jack, do you want to talk about the three retirements?
Yes, please. Lilian Sisvara is one of our retirements. She's a French teacher at Massey High School. She started her career at Jackie Hall in 1998 as a French teacher. She moved to Massey 10 years later, where she's taught Spanish and French, both at the AP level. She speaks English, Croatian, and holds a master's degree in both French and Spanish. So Lilian's going to be very difficult to replace. A lot of talents there. Jennifer Heitzke, grade four teacher from Stepanie Elementary School, is retiring. She has 32 years in Monroe.
Kindergarten.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Kindergarten. Yeah, there's a typo there. And 32 years in Monroe. First year, she was at Monroe, and the last 31 at Stepanie Elementary School. And she had two years at pre-first grade. All other years have been at kindergarten. And she originated the Wingman Program, which established school buddies for grades K and V together. And she originated Flight Crew, which is a community outreach program aimed at raising funds for local organizations. And lastly, Doris Licaio, Spanish teacher at Massey High School, will be retiring. And Doris started her career in Monroe in 1998 as a Spanish teacher at Massey. Her primary responsibilities have included introductory Spanish classes in levels one, two, and three. And she'll be completing her 21st year with us this year after starting her career in Bridgeport earlier on. So we thank Doris and all of the retirees for their years of service, and wish them nothing but the best as they enter their next chapter of their lives into retirement.
Thank you. Do I have anybody else? All right. Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda? Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and first up is our Massey Board Reps.
As of June 2nd, November, all the data came back for the Thank Pink Monroe campaign, and Massey was the biggest contributor in the entire town, so well done Massey. Also, Massey's Holiday Hunger Heroes campaign kicked off on the 11th and continues until the 22nd. Donations support the Monroe Food Pantry, and all non-perishable items are accepted. And our goal is 1,015 items.
Also, last week, some fall sports wrapped up, including the boys soccer team. Unfortunately, they lost to Guilford last Wednesday in their second round of states. So congratulations to them on a great season. Also, the girls volleyball team lost to Fitch last Thursday in their second round of states also, so congratulations to them on a great season. Also, last Thursday, seniors and juniors were inducted into the National Honor Society. Congratulations to them. And it's a very exciting week here at Massey. Students have worked very hard for the Mama Mia Musical that will take place here at Massey on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 7:30 to 10:00. And tickets are sold at the door and to students during their lunch waves.
All right. And November 18th, our senior athletes signed to their schools that they will be attending in the fall. We had a lot of Sacred Hearts in Southern Connecticut. Another thing was our swimming team. Elizabeth Stolzel broke both the 250 records in swimming, and our relay team also broke the 400 and the 200 records, also led by Elizabeth Stolzel. And our CTE teacher, Mr. Secconi, was honored as Teacher of the Year.
Great. Thank you. Does anybody have any other committee reports? All right. We will move on to public participation.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to the report of the superintendent then.
So first of all, we have a recognition for Chairman Donna Lane and George King. If we could just go over to the side here.
And CAPE is recognizing 10 years of service for both Chairman Lane and George King for the dedication that they've given to the Monroe Public Schools. Being a Board of Ed member is not an easy task, and it pays nothing. And it's a tremendous investment that both of these individuals have made into this district for the benefit of all of our staff and students, so I'd like to thank all of them. CAPE has sent these certificates in honor of their 10-year contribution to the district. There are also pins on the way. Unfortunately, CAPE sent 20-year pins, so we had to say, no, not quite.
We're not deserving, right?
So they'll send us the 10-year pins, and then we'll get those to both Donna and George. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, we have a review of the October Fund Activity Statement. Frank, if you'd take us through that?
Yes, I sent to the board the October monthly financial statement, and I'm just going to touch on a few of the items, which we've been talking about. The health insurance, we do see a deficit in that account. And per the discussions with the town, the town's going to be helping us out with that. And then the other negative figure, the $300,000 figure that was built into the budget and not assigned to any particular line item, so we're watching that number there. And that's a result, you know, we have instituted the budget freeze, trying to come up with $400,000, and as well as the town assisting with the medical insurance, and we're hoping that is enough. We'll know better as we get deeper into the fiscal year. We have reformatted the Enterprise and Special Revenue Funds, and we had discussion about the adjustments, the negative balances that was in the enrichment and intramural program. We've gone in and adjusted those negative balances in those special revenue accounts. We've balanced them off. So if you have that with you. If you don't, I do have a hard copy here, if anyone wants to look at the hard copy. But we have balanced off the negative balances to eliminate deficits that have been carried for years, so that now, looking at the accounts, each account will stand on its own in the current fiscal year that it's in. Previously, we had been carrying negative balances that went back four, five, and six years. So we've made adjustments to those accounts and cleaned those up. So under the Enterprise and Special Revenue Fund account, you'll see the count there that we made adjustments on October 31st to balance out those accounts. And so going forward, as we look at each of the enrichment and intramural program, you can tell immediately if it's carrying its own weight, which is the board's policy, so that they are self-sustaining. So those are the changes that we made in the Enterprise and Special Revenue Funds. We wanted to flag that for the board.
Did you ever find out what the Massey Fresh Fest Prom deficit of almost $6,000 is?
There was, in the Fresh Fest Prom, there was an expenditure that had been authorized of $3,000 to subsidize the prom, and it was just made, and it was told to be charged off to this account.
But why wouldn't it have been charged to the operating budget?
It should have been. In hindsight, it should have been. This was done a few years ago. When I looked into it, the direction was charge it off to this account, and it didn't have the money for it. And that was done about three years ago.
All right. So how are we rectifying that, then?
That one is still, if you have the fund statement in front of you, that one is still carrying a deficit of $5,920.
Right. $926.
We haven't come up with any way, normally what we would recommend, if you had money at the end of fiscal year, to charge it off to the Boards of Education's operating budget, the 7-101, and clear away that deficit, since that expenditure should have hit the Board of Education's budget, but it did not. But at this point, we're not recommending that to see where you are. You're having a difficult budget year as it is. So at this point, we are just carrying that as a deficit.
Okay.
Any other questions for Frank? All right. The last item on my report is just, we're entering that time of the year when inclement weather happens. We've had one delay so far, and just wanted to refresh people's memories as how this works. I know Jim had reviewed this in the past, and John had, too. When we have a delay or a school cancellation, there's a lot that goes into it. It starts at 3:45 in the morning. The alarms go off, and it's alarms plural. Joe's laughing because we have to set multiple alarms, because if the power goes out, you need something else, like your phone, to make sure that you're going to be up at 3:45 a.m. So after that occurs, there's conversations with the police dispatch. They are really good to us to let us know what's going on in the roads. Conversations with the Department of Public Works, also get information about the roads. Our plow crews to get information about school sites. And then 4:00 a.m., we start a conference call with a meteorologist that works with the local superintendents, because they give us information about what's going to come ahead for the day. And then the superintendents conclude with a roll call as to what every district's going to do, so everybody's aware of all the surrounding districts and the plans that they have in terms of delays or cancellations. Ultimately, that results in another conference call with Joe and myself, the Director of Finance and Operations, and the plow crew to plan out our morning in terms of what we're going to do to get everybody in safely if it's a delay. And then ultimately, we have to make the call by the latest by 5:15, because that automated message that everybody gets takes about 10 to 15 minutes to set up before you click send, and 3,600 phone calls go out. And it's the last place you want to have a typo. And thank goodness, I've been doing that phone call for eight years, and no significant typos. So that's the whole process. It spans a couple hours in time to get us all prepared for that kind of day, but it's a really important one to make sure everybody gets in safely. So just wanted to share that with everyone.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody have questions? David?
Jack, can you review the, I know you made a change to one of the delays. You eliminated it?
Yeah.
Eliminated?
Absolutely.
Eliminated the one hour?
We eliminated the two and a half hour.
Okay. So now we have a 90, a 2...
Correct.
And a 3. Okay.
Correct. Those are them. And we made that change so that we're in alignment with other districts. The three hours also help if we're really in a bind, and we really don't want to use it, but if it gets us in on a day when it's really iffy and we can still count that day, it's a help.
Anybody else? All right. We will move on to presentations. First up is the distracted bus stop study. So Neil, I'm sorry, how do you say your last name?
Chaudry.
Chaudry. And our chief, John Salvatore, are going to be co-presenting this.
You don't have to. I feel free to say it.
I wanted you here for questions. So, thank you all for having me here. The Connecticut DOT asked that I come out to the three Boards of Education's that participated in this pilot study and just share the results with them, and thank you guys for participating in this pilot study. So essentially, what we did is we conducted a pilot study. It's a distracted driving study. It is not a school bus passing enforcement study, per se. So again, we were in Bethel, Monroe, and Newtown. And I don't want to come across as alarmist, so I wanted to be sure that I pointed out to everybody that school buses are the safest vehicle on the road. Students are about 70 times more likely to get to school safely when traveling on a school bus than riding in a car. So, you know, the rest of this presentation is not about, you know, being worried about the students. That said, just over a year ago, there were several crashes across the country that resulted in the deaths of five schoolchildren at bus stops. Three of those, two of those crashes of the three that involved fatalities were deemed to be a result of distracted driving. So this led us to be in touch with the Highway Safety Office at Connecticut, and we said, is this a sign of things to come or not? And we just said, well, let's be ahead of any potential issues that might arise with distracted driving and a vulnerable population. So we put together fairly quickly this study that I'm going to talk about with the three superintendents and police agencies. So Jack, is there something?
I got it, Jack. You got a joke?
So, you know, we talk about the fatalities and stuff, but there's the potential for near misses, too. There's some sound at the end of this, by the way, so everybody be careful, because it scared me the first time I heard it. There we go. So that's just an example of what happens that doesn't result in a negative outcome. But there has been a possible rise in passing of stopped school buses, and there's at least a theoretical link between distracted driving and this behavior. I'm not sure the chief buys it or not, but...
Yeah. I don't know if we have enough data to...
And I agree. I agree. So it's a theoretical link at this point. Both activities rising together. Correlation does not imply causation, but what we decided to do is go out and do a distracted driving enforcement program during the times when students are being picked up and dropped off from school buses. What we did is something called corridor enforcement. Am I getting ahead of myself? Probably. So it's just a pilot study to begin with, so we wanted to find out what we can do, what are some of the issues with this, and we learned quite a bit. So again, all three superintendents were involved and very helpful. All three police agencies were involved. The Connecticut DOT all worked together to put this pilot together. And we did what I said was corridor enforcement, which I'll explain in just a little bit. The Highway Safety Office also used their media firm to produce some creatives and to try and help get the word out. The goal of this sort of program is not to issue tickets, but to deter behavior. So the ideal scenario is everybody knows it's happening, nobody engages in the behavior, and the behavior reduces without ever having to write a ticket. It's not the way real life works, but that's the goal. So that's why we like to have as much media related to what law enforcement is going to do as possible. So corridor enforcement is essentially, we find a straight path, and this isn't very straight, because Bethel informed us that the top of that 25 goes into Route 6. They said they have no bus stops up there, so we cut a left turn on 302 and continued into Bethel. This is our corridor of enforcement. This is also where we put out observers to observe distracted driving behavior in the general vicinity of bus stops on 25 and 302. I say general vicinity, because we didn't want to be standing right at the bus stops while students were getting on and get parents worried and that sort of thing. So we were in the neighborhood. I don't know if anybody reached out to your office or not, but we put contingencies in place so that they could get quick answers. Nobody did?
No calls. I saw them on my commute to work, though, standing out there.
Yeah. So, yeah, we went out right before the project, and we went out again. We probably observed about 8,000 to 12,000 drivers, both pre and post, and indicated whether they were driving distracted or not. The media was the national media. This was distracted driving month, so NHTSA and the state were, NHTSA's National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, and the state were putting the "You drive, you text, you pay" message out. The Connecticut DOT added the "Don't get busted," somewhat vocally as best they could, to make this fit this program. They also modified existing bus stop safety messages with the "Don't get busted" tagline. So enforcement occurred. Everybody wrote a lot of tickets. And the results. So what we're looking at is the percent of drivers observed with either a cell phone to their ear or in their hand. Many of you may be surprised at the relatively low percentages, because I think, as motorists, we kind of feel like half the drivers are out there driving distracted, but it's actually a relatively small number, and a little bit lower in this area than it has been in the state as a whole. So we were up around 8% in the past for the state locally. We were doing pretty good in the pre. This is after several years of enforcement around the same time, so that could have driven these numbers down. So you could see the smallest effect was in Bethel, but they started low and ended the lowest, so that's no criticism of them. Both Monroe and Newtown saw really decent declines in distracted driving. So Bethel had an 18 and 1/2% drop. It was not statistically significant, but they were so low, so again, both Monroe and Newtown saw significant decreases. 23% in Monroe, 26% in Newtown. All three towns combined saw a 23% decline. There's a lot of unanswered questions, as there usually is in a pilot study. Are passing stops, are they really related to distracted driving? We still don't know that. Is this enforcement that we're doing around the bus stop times any different from enforcement we might be doing regularly anyway? Is there a better result in reducing distracted driving using these time periods? And the most important question is, does this enforcement deter violators from passing stopped school buses? We don't know any of that. So this April, we will be going out again. We are hoping that Monroe will participate again. We'll be visiting with the chief and the superintendent again to gain, you know, participation. There's no obligation to do so, but what's going to change this time is there's going to be a lot more towns involved. We're going to hopefully go up to more than 10, nine of which will be enforcement, and three will be control groups, so that we'll get an answer to, is this any different from regular enforcement? We're going to use some of what we learned. We learned that the morning enforcement is particularly difficult for some police departments because of shift change times. Officers don't want to sit around for a couple hours before coming on and doing some enforcement, so we're going to figure out a way to make that work better for law enforcement. We're also probably not going to stick with the corridor sort of thing. I mean, what we're going to do is give a lot more freedom to the police agencies to enforce where they think the problem is. I know some of our agencies felt that there were places where they were getting a lot of complaints. Maybe it makes more sense for the enforcement to occur there. And what we hope to do is involve the bus drivers in the study, in that we are hoping they'd be willing to just do a tally for the month before, the month during, and the month after of the number of times a motorist passes them while the arm is extended. We've talked to bus drivers. Nobody sees a problem with this. Our understanding is they know each and every time this happens anyway, and all we're going to ask them to do is put a little mark on a piece of paper, so it shouldn't take away from safety or driving or anything. And we'll come back and work with you guys to hopefully make that happen, assuming participation. And that's it. Did I keep within the 10 minutes, I promise?
Pretty close. Good job.
There any questions? Now, the 10 minutes has gone with questions.
It's fair game.
David?
With this study program, are you aware of any federal or state grants available to help the police department with, like, overtime for enforcement or something like...
Yeah. These are...
I'm sorry. When we participated, it was under a federal grant.
That's great.
The Office of Highway Safety for DOT funnels the money from the feds to us. And I'm assuming, Neil, you could correct me if I'm wrong, that funding will be available again, usually is for these type of studies, so I'm assuming it's going to be available.
Yeah, that's great.
I don't see any reason I would change.
That's good. Thank you.
Anybody have some other questions? Thank you so much. We appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you, gentlemen.
I saw an article that said something like the bus arms are going to be extended longer to hope to try to get more people's attention for not passing. I don't know if that was just in a certain area or what. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think the one positive that should be mentioned here is that the district does a lot to prevent crossings, kids crossing to the other side of the bus and others crossing traffic. The pickup is usually on the side where the door is, and especially in these higher routes that we're studying here. I don't think, Jack, you could correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe there's any child that's picked up that has to cross a main road. Very few of our streets have a pickup where a child crosses.
If it's a dead end, you know, there might be some crossing, but all those thoroughfares not.
Yeah. So I think that's positive, and I think that's why we experience a low incidence of anyone getting hurt for that. And the violations, I think a lot of them are not being reported to us by drivers. They have a system set up where they can report directly to DMV, and I believe that's the way this bus company's handling it. We very rarely now get a complaint directly from a bus driver. If we do, we'll certainly take them and investigate an arrest, and the first, the fine is now up to $470 for a first offense. We will follow up if we do get them, but the bus company's been going through filling out a complaint form and sending it to DMV.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Well, we will move on then to our second presentation, which is our student assessment results. David, you are.
Definitely want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, Sheila Cassinelli helped me put the data books together in the data presentation, but I also want to thank all the administrators that are here, especially the instructional leaders. A lot of these folks are responsible for a lot of the good work that's being done here and can speak a lot more specifically about some of the work, because they're a little bit closer to it, but hopefully I will capture their good work here tonight. The books were distributed in the Week in Review. I think they're all spread on the website, but you have the hard copies in front of you. Kind of like in years past, I don't, I feel it's kind of silly to go through each page, but I want to definitely highlight some areas of strengths, and, you know, obviously there's always areas of improvement, and some of these things, it's kind of areas of maintenance and areas of improvement, because there's some spots where, yeah, we're doing really, we're doing really well. And most importantly, the purpose of tonight's presentation is look at what we're doing instructionally with this data, the work that started over the last couple of years. So, please, at any point...
I thought Greenwich moved up to Dergay.
No.
They didn't?
No. Dergay is very small. Wilton, Weston, Westport, Canaan, Wilton, Easton, Reading. Yeah, they're small. It's only like eight.
I haven't heard that, yeah. Helicopter view, our kids are doing really well. If you look at, the state does a composite, 3 through 8, results for the SBAK. Our kids did really well there, especially in ELA, both in ELA and math. 82 and 1/2% at goal, third in our Derg. And we're in a competitive Derg. Look at the schools in our Derg. It's a very competitive Derg. I think we have a lot to be proud of. Tenth out of the whole state, top 5.3%. A little lower in math, but still pretty high. Above the Derg average, ninth in the Derg, 23rd in the state, 12.4%. 73.3% of our kids meeting proficiency, meeting or exceeding proficiency, again, as a composite 3 through 8 score. meeting or exceeding proficiency, again, as a composite, three through eight scale. This, this one does a pretty good job of demonstrating our areas of strength and areas for improvement. I think it's really, again, the helicopter view is really positive. We're above the Derg average on SBAK in every single grade and in every single subject with the exception of eighth grade math. And the only caveat I'll make on that is the eighth grade math test was taken at a really tumultuous time last year at Jackie Hollow. If you guys remember the incident that happened there. Not to say that it would have been above the Derg average, but I think it's worth, I think it's worth noting that. You know, the middle school, definitely an area of focus for us all. But I think we're starting to see some of the good work that was done last year, and I'll talk a little bit more about it this year, starting to stem the tide there of, of, of kids dropping. We started to see some increases within the, within cohorts there this past year, which is, which is pretty impressive. Sixth grade had, ELA ticked up a little bit for the cohort for sixth grade, from fifth to sixth grade, down a little bit in math. Seventh, that cohort was up in both ELA and math. Eighth was down a little bit in each, but not nearly as precipitously as it has been in the past. But if you look at these, I mean, especially, I mean, I mean, that's, that's absolutely amazing. You know, if we're looking at just how we're doing compared to the Derg. Our ELA scores, our elementary scores are really, are pretty amazing. Number one in the Derg and ELA, grades three, four, and five. And then five, three, and two in, in math. I mean, we're, we're right there. And again, all of these, all of the, all of these, with the exception of this one right here, is above the Derg average. The next one kind of tells the same story. This is looking at achievement. So this is looking at achievement from one year to the next. And this is, this is kind of an interesting, an interesting piece here. Because what you'll find is, on the SBAK grades three through eight on achievement, we were, we increased in every single area from one year to the next. Okay, different, different groups of kids. But we saw increases in the percent of kids meeting or exceeding proficiency. The only, the only place we didn't, interestingly enough, was in grade four ELA here. But we were still number one in the Derg there. Just means it was probably, the test was probably a little bit harder. And then conversely with that, this side shows that, you know, we were higher in the Derg than we were the year before in all of these areas, with the exception of this one. But then ironically, we had, I mean, it's, I mean, it's miniscule, but we had a slight increase of, you know, 0.1 percent of kids, more students at or above proficiency than the year before. Same holds true for math. You know, higher everywhere, three through eight in math. One, you know, relative to our Derg, we saw one drop right here, even though we were, even though we were 0.3 percent higher. Really tiny, tiny drop here. So, you know, we always like to say the, these scores are a snapshot in time. The two big, the, the big scores that we're, we look at tonight are the SBAK and the SAT. Those are really what we would call summative assessments. There's a lot of other assessments that our kids are given throughout the year. And we'll, we'll look at some of those because we're going to talk about some of the work that's being done that are kind of like quick hitters that are given, that are done throughout the year to help give the, give the teachers some information as they plan curriculum and instruction and assessment. Some of those things are a program that we have called the STAR assessments. The state of Connecticut has interim assessment blocks, which kind of mirror the, mirror the, the SBAK tests, Fanta's and Penel's scholastics and so on and so forth. Those give us little pieces of information. And you'll see how we use that information in, in all of our, in all of our classes, in all the grades. Last year, I talked a little bit about this. I don't want to belabor the point too much, but I think it's, I think it's important to, to come back on this. John Hattie, educational researcher, talked about, you know, the most important factor in improving student, student performance is this concept of collective teacher efficacy, this collective belief of teachers and the ability to positively affect students, that it's every teacher's responsibility to improve the outcomes of each individual student. And we saw this being done really well at the elementary school. And I'm not, last year, I did a big piece on, on the element, on all the schools. But I talked a lot about SRBI at the elementary level. And I'm going to rehash a little bit of that. But we've taken a lot of that work that's being done and actually even refined it some at the elementary schools. And also, you know, a lot of that has moved into what's happening at, at the, at the middle school as well and helping them, you know, you know, start to, start to move, start to move the, the needle in the right direction as well. If you remember from last year, and this is kind of tough to see, tough to see on here, but this was, when we talked about collective teacher efficacy, okay, these are a couple of, a couple of assessments that, remember, I just listed all those assessments. These were a couple of assessments, I think, from the Fanta's and Penel's. And then this represented all the students and how they did. If you have a red, that's below, that's below proficiency. Yellow is approaching proficiency and green is exceeding proficiency. And what happens at the elementary level, and I talked about this last year, this is the exact same slide from last year. But what happens at the elementary level is then, when the, when they have their grade level meetings, the teachers then say, okay, this student is struggling with this particular concept. He or she's going to work with a reading consultant. This person's going to read, work with a reading specialist. These students are going to work with their teachers, maybe doing some sort of enrichment. So this, this win time, what you need now, is designed for just that, to give kids what they need at that time. If they need remediation, they get remediation. If they need enrichment, you know, they, they get enrichment. What was a little bit different from last year to this year at the elementary level is we, elementary folks are excellent at this. I was blown out of, blown out of the water when I, I went to some of the meetings last year. What was a little bit different this year is that we're not just doing this by school, but we have common data grids now from Monroe Elementary, Stepney, and Fall Hollow. So they're all collecting and using the exact same data. So when they come together for their district-wide grade level meetings, they can compare and contrast, are there any curricular issues that they're seeing district-wide? That work has gotten, has gotten pushed over to, to the middle school. And I credit, and I said it last year, Jack Lee, Laura, the instructional leaders, for the work that they've done in maximizing what they could do with, with this period of kids' time. So what happens is, once per cycle, there's team meetings for, for each of the, each of the teams at Jackie Hollow. The, the intervention's a little bit different at STEM because the STEM schedule and the Jackie Hollow don't completely align because the STEM schedule is much more aligned with the MASCIC schedule because of shared staff. But at Jackie Hollow, they have these team meetings that meet once, once per cycle. So that's once every six days. There's a, there's a, an administrator on each, on each team. And it's, it's primarily an academic meeting where they're going to plan what they're going to do with kids during kids' time. Kids' time is a thirty-minute intervention period or enrichment period that's, that's, that's provided every other day at, at the middle school. In the past, and I think I said this last year, this was not the case last year. But, you know, two years ago, kids' time in the past was a place for, you know, kids could use it as a study hall or do some sustained silent reading or go fresh for help. But now it's a, now it's a much more targeted intervention. And I really want to, you know, credit the instructional leaders because last year, we started this work. And they, they used the model that, you know, I just described what was happening at the elementary school. They used that model that was hap, that was happening there. And they just kind of went into it and started kind of collecting some data and trying to make decisions. And they were doing some, they did some great stuff. But they were kind of, you know, building the plane as they were flying it. And, you know, we got into a groove with it last year. And what was nice is, as the year progressed and as the summer progressed, they've really streamlined the process, looked at, you know, what went well, what didn't go well, what works, to the point where, they started a lot earlier this year. This year, we were able to start the year, hit the ground running. The teachers were comfortable with the process. And they were able to get going and, you know, develop a lot of those best practices over the summer for these kids' time meetings to get, to get kids the help that they needed. The other nice thing about the middle school is, just like the elementary school, they're also now using, across teams, they're using common, common data grids. So they're, they're looking at the same data points, whether it's a STAR assessment or an interim assessment benchmark, whatever it is. They're looking at the, the same benchmarks for the most part. It's a little bit, Kevin could correct me if I'm wrong, but it might be a little different in math to base on if you're in a algebra class or a fundamentals class.
STEM has a thirty-minute every other day as well?
STEM does not. STEM is, STEM has a little bit different. The, and Lee could probably speak to it a little bit better. A lot of the STEM intervention takes place during the lunch period just because their schedule is, has to be tied to MASCIC schedule. So MASCIC doesn't have a thirty-minute flex period, not yet anyway. But the, so, so they don't. So their intervention takes place usually during, during the lunch period.
And it's still targeted?
But it's still targeted, yeah.
Joe, what do you use to determine growth in some of those, like reading classes and math classes?
Do you guys want to address, like, how do you guys, how you measure growth in the reading classes? Is it going back and looking at the interim assessment? I would assume the interim assessment blocks, the STAR, the STAR assessments?
The STAR also increases in standard score from fall to spring because expectation is that as you go through years with curriculum, you sure, you score higher on that, that assessment. So we look at growth, will be growth in terms of that increased score and how the kids did as they go from fall to winter to spring.
And we do it, those three benchmarks. We're also a lot, able to do monthly testing for those kids that we're getting that targeted assessment. So we can see it over a four to six week period after wait for the three months of benchmarking. So it gives us a lot of flexibility. It's a quicker assessment, it's a purer assessment, so it's quicker for the kids without sticking out for a long period of time. But it's fairly predictable their success on SBAK.
Yeah, I think we found across, across the district that the STAR assessments have been, while they don't necessarily mirror the, the, the SBAK test as much, they're very predictive of, of performance on SBAK. So I had to have a little bit of, I don't know, my eyes are really bad. I'm going to have to look at my sheet more than, more than up here. But I wanted, I wanted to give you guys just a little bit of, you know, just a little bit of a sense of what you're, of what they're seeing. So hopefully this can make, make some sense to you. This area over here, so this is, this is an actual team. These guys gave me some of their data. They redacted student names and I, you'll see where it says like TELA means teacher ELA one or T math one. Those are just teachers' names. I just took anything out that could be identified. What we're going to see here is, on the left, the left side of this, of this black column here is ELA data and the right side is, is math data. This is from early in the year. So what we're looking at here, so this was, so this was, as they're looking to work with their students for what they called session one, which is really the beginning of the year, September and early October. The next one was October and November. They're looking at how the students are doing. They, you know, they have some data coming into the year. They look at the spring STAR assessment. Their, this is an eighth, this is an eighth grade group right here. The spring STAR assessment, the, their SBAK score in seventh grade, and then their first assessment from this year in, in STAR. And then on math, it's the same thing. It's the, it's the, the fall STAR assessment, the spring STAR assessment, their eighth, their seventh grade math SBAK score, and then their eighth grade STAR assessment. Again, this is really early in the year. So these aren't all assessments that they're taking in the beginning of the year. Two of them on this side were done the previous year. So they're coming in with something. The colors, if you go up from, from red to, go from red to green. Red being below proficiency, yellow being approaching proficiency, blue is at proficiency, and green is exceeding proficiency. So you get a really quick, it's a nice, easy glimpse to see, you know, how kids are doing. And this is the data that's used when they're in their hands-up meetings to determine where kids are going to go during, during kids' time. So for this, this was going to be, you know, session one. And I condensed this. There was more stuff here, but I just wanted to make it a little bit easier to read. It's still kind of tricky to read, but, for September and October. So for example, you know, student number one showed struggles in both, you know, in both ELA and, and math. But his most recent math score was a little bit better. And that was, that was one that was given this year. So they focused on, you know, this student working on central ideas in the IXL program. So during kids', kids' time, that student would do that. You know, you see student three here, a lot of greens and blues. Or, you know, student seven down here, a lot of greens and blues. That's a student that can use the kids' time for enrichment. They can go, when we were, a couple of times I've been at Jackie Hollow, kids are hanging out and the CTE rooms do an enrichment program with Mr. Demcheck. They're getting extra band lessons, going to, you know, do art. You know, extra art with Mr. Biase. Some of them that enjoy reading or, you know, doing independent reading and whatnot. You know, if you look at, you know, I'll just, I'll just give you like one other example and hopefully you'll understand, you know, you get, you get the gist of it here. Like student thirteen here, which you can't read, it's hard. I'm not on student thirteen, there he is. Student thirteen had a dip in their ELA and, right here. And had, and had a little bit of a dip in math. But the concern here, now this is where you know, you know, you're working with the students directly, you know what they need. And so this particular student was working more intensively with the, with the reading specialist. So this is the work that's, that's happening there. And I think, Alan, you ask this question every, every year, and I think it's, it's a good one. What are the tier one interventions? Because this really isn't a tier one intervention. These are more, and when Alan asked that, he's talking about scientifically researched based instructions, tier one, tier two, and tier three strategies. Tier one's what's happening in the classroom. This is, you know, I would consider this stuff to be mostly tier two and even some tier three stuff. But the, good question, and I know these guys could speak to it, is there is a lot of tier one strategies, especially in terms of differentiation happening now across the board, you know, three through twelve, well, K through twelve. But, you know, the, the work that we've done with Teachers College with the, the workshop model is starting to infiltrate its way into math as well, where teachers will do a, you know, they'll do a little ten-minute mini lesson, break kids up into the group, work with specific kids on specific strategies and have kids broken up individually. We're seeing that happen in reading and writing, but we're also seeing it now. You know, I know Kevin talked about it in math classes. And even some of the math teachers, even at the high school here, some of the math teachers will invite Kevin in, have him help out in the class a little bit while the teachers conference with, you know, a handful of students, a couple of students at a time, to remediate something that could be initial, that, that, something that could be an issue. That's happening right in the classroom. Another piece coming up next, I think it's next Tuesday, Jack? We're meeting with, interestingly enough, and we have a connection, we know some folks over in Cheshire. Cheshire had some really tremendous gains this year across the board. And we're going to sit down with them and kind of share some of the strategies that we're doing that are working for us. And, and they're going to share some of the things that are working for them. And, you know, that's what, that's what it's all about. At the high school, you're probably sick of these slides because I've had them here since I was the principal. But I just think it's important. It's been six years now since we have made an investment with the, with the SAT suite of assessments, where we give our kids a PSAT nine, a PSAT ten, a PSAT, and then obviously the SAT junior year, which all students get now as part of the school day SAT. You know, I assure you this, the, the section scores are placed on an overlapping scale. So if you're taking the SAT, you get between, I think it's 200 and 800. But basically what this is showing is that if you took the SA, the PSAT nine and you got a 500, well, it's a scaled score, which means that if you had taken the PSAT ten or the SAT, you would have gotten a 500 on that day. So the scores are vertically aligned with each other. And why that's important is when, you'll see on the next slide, we want to see growth from, from one, you know, from one test to the next. So what you see here, and I hope I explain this every, every year, but I hope I do it justice again here, is this is one cohort of students. So what's nice is, this is this year's senior class. So I have last year's seniors, last year's juniors. And now we have all their data because they're done taking the, the SAT, this year's juniors and this year's sophomores, but when they were freshmen last year. And what we like to see is, and we do, is we see increases from the PSAT nine to the PSAT ten, to the PSAT, to the SAT. A nice, it's, it's always good to see this growth from the PSAT ten to the PSAT because it's the same test. The PSAT ten and the PSAT are the same test. They're out of the same amount of points. So we want to, we definitely want to see growth there. One of the things I think we're extremely proud of at, at the high school, and if you remember last year, I remember saying it, we had a, we had a cohort of students that, that came out of eighth grade last year that, that struggled. Okay, they were last in the, they were last in the Derg and, you know, whatever. That's relative to a Derg. But we had a, we had a group that had kind of struggled here. I'm really happy to see, if you look at, that's this group right here, okay? They had They had the highest score. Again, all I'm doing is comparing them to the previous groups of students. They actually by one point outscored, you know, the class ahead of them. So we're really happy to see them. And I know that is a huge credit to the work done by, you know, the teachers and the instructional leaders to really focus on, hey, we need to, we need to target these people. That's what collective teacher advocacy is all about. It's about going after and getting these kids and to get them to where they need to be. So that was, that was, that was a really nice piece. Our SAT numbers are, are good. Our, our E L A is about five points lower than the, than the Derg average. I don't particularly sweat that too much. I always, you know, if, if we're fifteen, twenty points away, I, it's kinda nerve wracking. But five points, I would say you're within one question of the, one question of the, of, of being there. What was really nice this year was our math. If you had a chance to take a look at our math. It was also interesting, I'm sorry, I should go back to this for a second. I think Mike just coughed to remind me. What's also, what's actually interesting about the scores, although we were down a few points, then the percentage of students meeting the college or career readiness benchmark by the, established by the college board and adopted by the state of Connecticut, actually increased. We had eighty-three compared to the year before. So we had eighty-three point four percent of our kids as compared to eighty-two point seven, even though the, the numbers went down a little bit. Which just means the kids who scored high scored higher. The kids who scored low scored, scored a little bit lower. The other, the other piece though, I, I, really, really proud of. If you see, our, our math numbers really jumped up this year. Five seventy, highest since the, since the SAT has been redesigned. It's the highest score in school history, up, I think like, it's, it's actually a forty-four point gain from their PSAT score to their SAT score, up over, up over previous years. And, you know, you know what they say, imitation is the highest form of flattery. We had, we've had schools calling Kevin and asking, hey, what are you guys doing over there? It seems like it's working. And that's what we, that's awesome. That's really good stuff. Rest of the stuff, man, this is really small. Hopefully you follow along in your book. AP, we continue to be really happy. I, I know, I, I think beforehand, we were talking in policy committee about kids taking AP classes, going into college and being, you know, being able to either opt out of introductory level courses or being given credit and graduating early. And that's what Jerry's daughter did. Interesting, our percentages were, were pretty close. Excuse me, the, the one piece that kinda jumped out at me at first, I was like, wow, we had a lot, we had, not, not a lot, but we had fewer kids taking AP courses last year as compared to the previous few years. And Jake and I think Lisa Peterson dug into this a little bit, and it was actually interesting. There's, the majority of our AP classes are junior and senior classes, with the exception of AP Gov, and I think Computer Science. I think sophomores can take Computer Science now. But besides that, the majority of our classes are junior and senior, heavily populated. And we are, we were down a hundred juniors and seniors between two thousand seventeen and two thousand nineteen. So it jumped out at me at first, but I understand it. The, the American Council of Teachers of Foreign Languages awards a seal of biliteracy. This is a, a nice piece. Lisa Peterson does a great job with our World Language Department. They offer the seal of biliteracy for students who are proficient in, in at least two languages. We had twenty, this was the second year of it, we had twenty-seven students attain that seal of biliteracy. I know we have more, I know my daughter's already talking about it, she's a senior right now. We already, last year we had twenty-seven kids in French, Latin, and Spanish. This year we already have kids in Spanish, French, Mandarin, and Russian that have already, that have already qualified for the seal of biliteracy. So hoping to see that number go up. And it's, that's, you know, that's, that's really important, you know. This is, it's a, the world is getting smaller. It's definitely more of a multicultural place. It's a great, great thing for kids to be able to do. I think I say the same thing every year on this one. To me, this is where the rubber hits the road. All these, all these numbers are great, but, you know, what are, what are our kids doing? Where are they going? Interestingly, last year we had a much higher, or not a much higher, but a little bit higher number of kids going to four-year colleges. That was down a little bit this year. But we saw the number of two-year and vocational school students increase a little bit. So we're still right around the same percent of students going to either a four-year, two-year, or vocational school. You know, I don't know exactly the reason behind that, besides the fact that some of these programs, some of these places have some really good programs. Who's a tonics, advanced manufacturing program is a program for, a great program for kids that, you know, two-year program, I think their average salary coming out, they have like ninety-eight percent job placement, and the average salary is somewhere in the vicinity of like forty-six to fifty thousand dollars coming out. It's a good thing for kids.
Joe, quick question? Two thousand eighteen's number of graduates is wrong. That should be over three hundred. They were like three oh one, three oh two, not two hundred and two.
Okay, I'll take a look, thank you. Looked at this a hundred times, thank you.
And the armed services are up too.
And then the other one is the arms, the, interesting, I mean, it's, it's only two percent, but, you know, two percent's a pretty big number when you're talking about, you know, two hundred and fifty something kids. I'll fix that, and I'll, I'll send that back out for you. And, you know, just the last piece, just to leave you with, kids graduate and they go on to great places. I, I don't know how fair it is to keep doing this, but, you know, the last, the last book of the two thousand nine version of The Barrens listed colleges into categories of most competitive, highly competitive. We still kind of use that nomenclature. But, I mean, your most competitive colleges are your, your Ivy Leagues, your North Carolinas, your UBA's, your Georgetown's. You know, over sixty acceptances for kids getting into those schools. And then another two hundred and twenty-one into the next tier down, which is probably your, your Fairfield U's, your Yukon, which is incredibly difficult school to get into now. It's, it's really excellent, you know, your next tier down. But, you know, I like to say, you graduate from Monroe Public Schools, the world is your oyster. You have, you have a lot of options, and that's, I think that's really the most important thing we could ever say. And if you read the back of the book, you'll, the, the instructional leaders put some improvement strategies in the back. Normally back there, they update that every year. If you wanna take a look at that on your own, and I think I hit most of them with some of the bigger pieces. Any questions for me?
Is this on a PDF or anything? I use these for work to really.
I'll make it a PDF for you.
Thank you, Joe. Or if anybody also is using, I'll take it, thank you.
Yeah, Sheila put the, Sheila put.
Thanks, what's that?
Sheila, Sheila put the PDF right on the website.
It's on the website?
Yeah.
Awesome.
I'll, I'll send you the, the path to it.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, good information, good work, thank you.
Yes, thank you. It's, listen, I just delivered, they should be delivering it.
Yeah, everybody, it's a really dedicated staff in this town.
Great stuff, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to old business. Up first, we have our athletic surcharges, gate proceeds, and fundraising. John, are you using this?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, you're.
All right, the first part that I'm just gonna talk about is, is the revenue of where we get our funds to run the athletic department budget. And first is the gate receipt proceeds, as you, as you know. Comes from boys and girls basketball and football. And how we've gotten those, those, those numbers over the years is historical data, based mainly from the three-year historical average. And it will vary, will go up and down based upon, you know, the success of our teams, who we play, and the weather. Take for example, this year, you know, doing quite well on our, our numbers up to date in terms of football and our season passes. So we're right around there. So, I mean, if we have good weather on Thanksgiving Day or the night before Thanksgiving, we should do well. If it's pouring and we're playing, that number goes down, and then we'll rely on our basketball, our gate receipts to, to, to catch up any of those things. But it's, it's, it's process when we go through, and you'll see when, in, in a month, when I go a few weeks, less than a month. With next year's budget, we're gonna go in those, that three-year number. Now this year, once again, it changes every year. You know, you, you go three-year historical average, if you do it just for football, and you're doing the next year based upon three years, but only one year is the Thanksgiving Day game, then you're sort of skewed. And just going the vice versa, the other way, you know, your three-year average is two years of the football, of Thanksgiving Day game, well, you're going into a year where you're not having the Thanksgiving. So that's how we do the gate receipts. Athletic surcharge collection, and once again, as I've said here, you know, when we come in do the budget presentation, historical collection data over the years that we've done, our surcharges. And it's mainly driven by the three-year average participation rate for each program. You know, when I present the budget, we talk about, you know, some of our numbers, you know, even though our population has gone down at Massey High School, percentage of unique athletes, the amount of people who, who participate in sports, that percentage of the student body has, has gone up on our roster starts. It stays sort of solid. So that's how we get their athletic surcharge collection in terms of what I put as a projection for the year. And then the remaining is the Board of Ed contribution. And that is, you know, based obviously on a sliding scale, how much we collect from surcharges and how much we get from our gate receipts for the course of the year. This is for this year. As I said, we have in the budget twenty-seven thousand, and right now we're approximately ten-six, ten-seven in terms of gate receipts. So I hope for a good, if we have a good Thanksgiving Day game, two good teams and good weather, we're gonna hit where we, where we thought we might be at this time. And then once again, you know, you wait for a good winter, so we're right in, in that projection if we do well. And the surcharge collection is at one ninety-nine. And then the board contribution based upon those numbers would be four twenty-nine if we hit our total budget of six fifty-six, that was presented from our projections last year.
Next one, I think Frank and Katrina are gonna speak to. Katrina, you wanna come up and join John there? Thank you. So I don't know if you know Katrina. Katrina is the, in charge of finances at Massey, and she handles a lot of the athletic finances coming and going in the accounts of the high school. So.
Well, the flow chart is to design a show where the cash flow is going, where the money is taken in the gate proceeds, deposited to the general fund, then from there it's recorded in the Munis and Special Revenue account, and then from there it gets transferred into the Board of Education Operating Budget. And then there's an interaction between the Board of Education's Operating Budget and the Student Activity Fund. And then from the Student Activity Fund is cut actual checks to officials. And what happens is a lot of back and forth between Katrina at the high school and Linda, who was here last, last meeting in my office. And the two of them worked together on the, these funds. And what happens is, is that payment is made both through a W two form and a ten ninety-nine. So if we have a teacher that is already on our payroll and is doing an activity for which they're paid for, that gets added to their gross earnings for the year, so goes on to a, a W two. If it's an outside person that comes in, we treat them as a contractor, and they're issued a ten ninety-nine. So then there's a lot of back and forths between Katrina and Linda in rebalancing out these, these accounts between different funds.
And these guys would all be ten ninety-nines, because this is, these are officials. So Katrina writes a check out of student activities to pay for the officials.
How often do they get paid, Katrina?
Typically Carolyn gives me a slip after, the day after the game. And so I cut checks almost every day to officials during the season. We move the funds to the account at the beginning of the season. I cut the checks throughout the season, and we move to doing them the day after, so we know that the game happened and we're paying the ones that showed up. And so they get their check usually within a week, which is an excellent turnaround for a school system. And then at the end of the season, I go through and reconcile those numbers. And if, you know, however we, whatever monies we transferred from that Board of Ed budget, then we reconcile it, and then we return the excess funds back, and so she can post them back, so we have a true number in the Board of Ed name.
Any other questions on this process? All right, we have the next one. So this is the surcharges and stipends. So Frank, you wanna start us off?
Basically showing the, again, the process, the athletic surcharge is collected via physical checks and online payments. It goes into the general fund, and then it gets recorded in the Munis Special Revenue, transferred to the Board of Education Operating Budget, and then it offsets the expenditures in our stipend account, which is a budgeted item that we have in the Board of Education's budget. And again, when there are employees, they're getting the W two. When there are contractors, such in the previous slide, they're getting a ten ninety-nine. And there's a lot of interaction, they say, between a, a high school and the finance office balancing out. When receipts are deposited, we get the bank receipts in our office. The deposit slips and that is verified then in our office in regard to, to making sure it's reconciled with the numbers. And so there's, there's several steps of reviewing and oversight in the process.
And then now my question with that is how are those people paid?
This group here?
How often?
Most stipends are, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're, they're paid with W two.
That's not my question. When, when does the stipend get paid?
Usually mid, usually midpoint. If it's a, most of those are coaching stipends, so usually midway through the season and then at the end of the season.
Thank you.
Yeah, after the season is over.
Right, so midway?
Midway and then at the end. There's specific dates that everyone gets prior to the season, so you know when you're gonna get paid.
Okay.
Each season.
And is that on a regular payroll cycle for those who, that are staff members? And ten ninety-nines are on a different one, or is it the same?
They would get paid on the same cycle. So if you're, if you're a coach that is, does not teach in the building, you will get paid on the same one that, you know, like if I was a coach. If I was a coach, I would get paid the same day.
All right, thank you.
John, I know the answer, but last meeting it was asked, how do you keep track of the surcharges? What families have paid and what families have not?
When we get them in, we compare them to the rosters that we have, obviously. Katrina gets a copy of the rosters, and most of the surcharges either come in through pay schools or go directly to Katrina. Some trickle right to, directly to me, and I just hand them right to Katrina. And she compares the roster with the checks, and the things that come through pay school. And any time someone doesn't, you know, leave a roster, we go back and forth. You know, we get them off the roster, so they don't always surcharge you. And we do that probably, of course, the first couple of weeks in the season.
And then if somebody doesn't pay, do they remove from the roster then?
If they're not moving from the roster, we usually, as I said, we don't want, in my years, I do not want someone not being a participant as a financial burden. But obviously they have a free and reduced lunch, which any, if they qualify in any way, that, that is usually, that will be waived. But we try to work with the family in terms of allowing it to.
So we've done, yeah, we've done payment plans in the past.
Yeah, they work, they work discreetly through Katrina.
Yeah, I ask that they just come directly to me. I keep track of it on the same spreadsheet. I have a separate tab of those. And typically it's not an issue, they spread it out however they need. We set, you know, finalize by the end of the season. And most of those that do it know they can just contact me directly, and we just work kind of.
So we don't have a problem with that?
No, no.
Awesome.
We just work in the background, so.
Frank, quick, quick question. In looking at this slide and the previous side, slide of gate surcharges, there's a lot of similar process there. Is it, is it just a matter of best practices in finance to keep them separate? Or why not merge them? In other words, take surcharges and gate proceeds and put them all into the general fund? And are these two separate line items or just two separate processes?
Well, this one here is hitting your, this one here is hitting your stipend line item. Jack, would you go back to the?
Yeah, can you go back, John? Got it, thank you.
Okay. And this one here is going through the Student Activity Fund. So there's, there's slightly different processes that are going on. I think it's cleaner that you keep them.
To keep them separate?
Separate, yeah.
I think John has talked about the future, you were thinking about making some changes, or no?
In terms of?
In terms of the way the flow works. You were, correct me if I'm wrong, in terms of, this is the proceeds, gate proceeds offset the officials, and then the, the surcharge offsets the stipends. But hadn't you talked about what? And then the, um, surcharge offsets the stipends. But hadn't you talked about what?
I, I, I talked about, you know, because sometimes it could be confusing. If you're taking a look, you know, just in here, you know, you know, why is, you know, officials negative or it. You know, sort of try to separate those things because it is a, you know, we do have three separate things paying for the entirety of the budget. You know, so if you offset, you know, uh, gate proceeds all the time to s, to say, uh, what they are now in terms of officials. People think there's a general correlation they're paying. Well, that's basically, uh, based upon the ledger, you know. Don't necessarily have to do it. It could be less confusing to, to, to the folks if we sort of separate that. Uh, there's nothing wrong with putting them together, but it could be less confusing.
Easier to keep track of?
Right.
What, what, right?
I agree. That way you also also know exactly how much your officials cost for a year. And, you know, your gate proceeds, how much your gate proceeds are, instead of netting the two of them. I would think gate proceeds goes into revenue. Officials should be stand as officials.
I mean, Katrina and I work together with officials and so we know exactly how much, but when you put those together, it's confusing.
Right, and it's also more just more transparent so that everybody sees exactly how much officials cost for the year.
Any other questions on these two?
As far as, uh, John, uh, boosters, fundraisings done by individual teams or otherwise donations.
I have, there's a couple of examples that, uh, uh, so your first, you know, the first we'll do the Ice Hockey Parent Association. They've been around for a while. It's a five oh one C-three. And I don't know exactly how many years ago, ten, eleven, twelve years ago, now I remember the meeting in this very library, it's more so over there. Where the parents took over payment of the ice time. Now this parent association has been a while, but this became their main, uh, port of, focus of fundraising. So the Ice Hockey Parents Association pays for all the ice time. And last two seasons, it's been approximately thirty-one thousand. You know, a little over thirty and then a little less than thirty-two. Those were actually not the highest we've seen. You know, when we've gotten to to Yale and to the state semifinals and the finals, that that number goes up. Because, you know, you keep on practicing throughout March. Um, so as I say, the costs were very based upon the sex, the success of the team. This contract that we have with the ranks comes to an end in twenty twenty-one, so we'll, you know, the negotiations start, uh, probably soon. Uh, as John will know, you know, you know, with the owner of that facility, um, first we'll, we'll talk about, I will probably go down with the, the, uh, the head of the Ice Hockey Parents Association. We'll have that conversation and then we'll bring it back to, uh, to, 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 to Jack, uh, in terms of what the the numbers were. And then we'll just go back and forth before we try to finalize an agreement. So that those negotiations are probably gonna start towards the end of this year. I'm sure they'll, I'm sure they'll reach out to us with, uh, what they want, uh, in terms of the contract soon. Um, and that's so some of the things that the Ice Hockey Parent Association, uh, provides for, you know, the, you know, for for boys' ice hockey, they're getting team members' travel bags. So they'll have them for their four years. They could have them during the off-season. They're not property of of Massey High School. They give them the property of the actually, uh, member of the team. So they could use them in the off-season and they carry it with them when they graduate. They graduate, they buy a new bag. So those are their main things. This is a little bit different. I don't have this on the sheet compared to, say, uh, our girls volleyball team just finished up their season. And what they do during the course of the year, they have a, if you've gone to see one of our volleyball games, the boys volleyball team does as well. They have a small food sales down in the, uh, down in the gym where they sell water, Gatorade, pizza. Our swim team does the same. And any income that they generate from from them goes directly to to Katrina the ne- the next morning and that day they counted up. And that goes into their activity, the actual, say, girls volleyball activity account held here at Massey. And what those proceeds from those different sports usually go to is paying or reducing the cost of their, uh, end-of-season banquet. Any additional items that they may have. Or, uh, take for example, if they do a fundraiser or they they get a little extra money and they want to. Say we're going to Norwich Free Academy for a state tournament game. They may want a coach bus with a bathroom. So what happens is those sometimes use that money to pay for a charter. We pay for the cost of what it'd be for a yellow bus. The difference between the yellow bus and the charter, the funds from Katrina's account that they fundraised for those, you know, small sales of pizza and. And water because the 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 games are at dinnertime down in the gym, we'll, we'll pay for that difference in cost. So those are the two different types, the five oh one C-three and the student activities. There's only a couple of five oh one, a few. There is the Ice Hockey Parents Association, our Panther Football Club, and we all know, uh, the Massey Wall Sports Booster Club as well. Which it, you know, pays for all of our awards and any, uh, items of of want that we may have or emergency items that we may need to get during the course of the season.
John, do the, um, I know you said we have an agreement with the ranks. Um, do we get any, are there gate proceeds? Do we get any gate proceeds that goes directly to the ranks?
There are gate proceeds and that goes directly to the rank.
Is that something that we can?
Eight dollars per person per game.
Is that something that they are open to?
Yeah, that's, that's, say they may, is open would be, yeah. That's a tough, that's a tough one. And that is, uh, something that all the teams that are down there, uh, they charge. Uh, they do charge. Uh, it's it's done as well.
Is that typical?
As she just said, the cost. And I, to be honest, that is a, is something that athletic directors who are use that facility, you know, talk about. But I I think it's, you know, you see that in a lot of facilities, uh, because of the high overhead of those specific ranks.
I'm sure, I'm sure they charges a.
Yeah, absolutely.
Penny to use it.
Yeah, and I don't think everybody charges though because I have experienced, um, where parents have showed up in almost tears. That they did not bring cash with them to pay to get in. And I know that my family has actually paid for other opposing team parents to get into the game because they did not know about the, the, the fees.
So you'll be talking to like Milford and Bridgeport?
Well, you you could talk to the other ranks. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that come into play, uh, with respect to, uh, other ranks. First and foremost, the safety of the kids driving. I prefer not having them get on highway. So those do things coming to, those things come into play in terms of, uh, of any sort of negotiation where we decide that we want, you know, we want to play. Ranks is very easy. It's close and they've been good, really good to us and it's a, it's a really nice facility.
Milford just has new ownership of their facility.
Yeah.
And I just was recently there this past week for a tournament all week. And they have completely moved on their, um, their facility with the new owners. Changed, upgraded locker rooms, the whole room, that you keep in mind.
Christina, any questions?
What, um, who dictates what sports can charge for admissions? Like, right, we have football and girls and boys basketball charge.
That would be.
You?
Yeah.
So it's not a SEAC rule or anything like that?
No.
No.
No, I mean, we could charge for everything. Some schools charge for everything, some do not.
Okay.
Uh, because of our surcharge, you know, I, you know, if I do, I have made the decision that not to to charge for other sports. Plus you start charging, you know, you do have a cost associated with that to the sales persons.
Is it based on attendance or just the official fees or?
And, no, it's just, you know, quite frankly, based on attendance at those games.
Okay.
The only exception to that is if we're hosting, uh, an S M U C or a C I C game, then like if a baseball game.
Yeah, we charge for that. And we don't, and we don't get those proceeds anyways. They go straight to the league or to the C I A.
Right, yeah, that's different. But I'm just talking about regular season.
Any other questions at all?
So, John, just so I'm clear, the, the money raised from basketball and football only goes to the general fund. That's the only money that comes back. But the other sports where you say we don't charge, they're able to sell different items that go directly to the teams? Or to fundraising?
Yeah, if you sell items, you know, I, if you sell items like the small sales that they have, just, yeah, they would go right to Katrina in the activity account. Uh, other sports could do it, you know, the Booster Club operates the concession stands. They have the right of per refusal at everything. Uh, in terms of, you know, the concession, they do it for the football games, they do it for soccer, they'll do it for field hockey and they'll do it for cross, the cross down the stadium field. Uh, and they'll do it for basketball games if, uh, for the large, for the larger tournament games.
And I think you have some sports that fundraise harder than other sports.
Mm-hmm.
Like, like you can see boys hockey, well, girls hockey does the same thing because we have the same ice, um, time. Cost and everything. So like we do a ton, like Friday night, there's a disco skate in Winter Garden up in Bridgefield, you know. Where all, everybody is invited. We do a fifty-fifty raffle, we do a restaurant night, we do the faculty, student, you know, player hockey game. Like there is tons of fundraising going on the whole year to keep the ice cost down.
John, I think, um, this discussion is and understanding of of the, uh, the way it operates is very helpful to us. Because we're gonna, uh, we're gonna scrutinize the budget, obviously, uh, much more intensely this year. So this helps us understand this whole process. So thank you. Um, and I never realized before, some of these numbers that we're talking about for ice time and stuff. This is significant money that saves the taxpayers, uh, 'cause if the parents weren't out here doing all this fundraising, I don't know if we'd have these programs. I mean, right?
That was the, you know, you know, telling me years ago when we had the discussion with with ice hockey, the ice time was the big, big thing on the table.
Yeah.
Last question, John. Uh, as far as outside organizations using our facilities, do we charge them and where would that go?
I'm, I'm sorry?
As far as outside organizations using any, you know, B O E facility, that money comes in directly.
What, what happens is there's, there's a fee that, uh, Katrina sends out a bill and that money goes to central office.
It's usually for-profit organizations, not so much like.
I, I, I mean, I, you know, full disclosure, I've been one of those organizations. I just, I, I mean, the reason I am, I just think it's helpful for people to know. How that's, A, deciding where that money goes.
It's actually based in board policy in terms of the fee structure.
Yeah, it is.
And then it's part of our special revenues.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of special revenue, not so much from fields as much as probably the auditorium. In the, uh, in the spring, the auditorium is booked up every weekend with a, a dance, uh, some, some sort of a dance, uh, uh, company coming in. To do their end-of-year recitals and then, yeah, Frank, the pool.
Well, we have our own coaches running camps during the off-season that are being charged. You know, participants are being charged to attend those camps. Are we charging revenue?
We, we charge, there's a, a percentage of revenue is charged.
Okay, so we do collect.
Mm-hmm.
And now that doesn't cover, is, that's not a cover, if, so if it's one of our coaches who is running their own program for whatever it is, some sort of camp in the off-season. Is there, are they covering their own insurance because it's not really a school?
Yeah, they cover their own insurance.
Okay.
Yes.
And we collect in the central office, we collect the certificates of insurance for different organizations that use the school facilities. And that's, we try and stay on top of that to make sure we have the proper, uh, insurance certificate for any of these outside groups that come in. I'll hand out to the boards, there's a lot of information we just gave you. Uh, I'm gonna give you a summary of the different accounts. Um, that basically Katrina and Linda have put together and we have reviewed that. So it's just some background information what we've been discussing this evening. So you have something in writing to, uh, refer back to.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
All right, thanks, John. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Katrina.
All right, we will move on to our mid-year, uh, retirement financials. Do we do using?
No. No. Yeah, we're just gonna speak to it. Um, yeah, we have a few scenarios.
Do we have copies for the audience?
Uh, we do not. No, I, I, I talked to Dave a little bit. I was gonna speak to, um, these scenarios and just walk you through how this works with each employee type. They're fairly simple. So with a teacher, when a teacher retires mid-year, which we don't have any of this year. One of the things that we do is we'll have some overlap time where we'll have the new teacher come in and come in a little bit earlier before the other teacher leaves. So there's some costs there. There might be three days, might be as much as five days, but that way there's continuity of instruction. Um, there could be some savings if the teacher, the new teacher's hired at a lower rate. So this would be more probable with an elementary teacher where, uh, there's a larger candidate pool. So the exiting teacher generally higher rate, new teacher generally lower rate. If it's a shortage area, not so much. If you're looking for a world language teacher or a physics teacher, we won't save money on that. Salaries will remain about the same because those people are very, very hard to get. So depending on the type of hire, um, could be savings there, could be not, you have the overlap. But that's pretty much the ins and outs of what happens with the mid-year teacher retirement. On the administrative side, uh, overlap again because we have to have continuity of service. And then, uh, typically we save some money on insurance, but not always. If we have an interim, we might save money on insurance. If it's a regular hire, we, both the new and old would have insurance, there wouldn't be savings there. And then, um, uh, there are some steps with the administrative contract, but very few. So if it's a new administrator with limited experience in the position, could be a little bit of savings there. But it's not like the teacher's contract where there's a lot of steps and if you've got a new person replacing an experienced teacher, there could be significant savings. On the admin side, new versus very experienced, narrower margin, uh, but potentially some savings if you have a new person coming in. And then on the director of finance side, uh, Frank does have some info about that too, unless you have questions on what I just shared.
The, um, I was working full-time through December, uh, September tenth. And then after that I dropped down to three days a week and that lasted like two weeks. Um, and I found when I came in the office, it was just overwhelming. I couldn't keep up with it. So I went to four days a week. And then the last several weeks, we were doing it five days a week because of the budget process. But looking at the numbers, um, conservatively, we're estimating at least, um, six thousand dollars in breakage. Uh, now through, um, January thirty-first.
Meaning savings, right.
Savings, uh, on the salary, on the salary side. Uh, and then depending on, after that, depending on the new finance director that is hired and what level he or she comes in at and when they come in. Um, and I did account for some overlap, uh, for the, uh, some time, the two of us for transition. So, and then on the health insurance, um, I don't take health insurance, so there's a savings. I estimated just for a half a year. And that was twelve, uh, twelve thousand dollars. So I've summarized everything in writing. You take one and just pass it down, but the summary I just gave you now, you now have it in writing. Uh, they say the six thousand dollar estimate is a conservative estimate. I suspect it'll be more, but, um, we won't know when, could we see where we are?
And is that accounted for in the budget phrase?
No.
Should we encode it in the budget, budget phrase?
No, we do not.
No, I said, should we?
Oh, I'm sorry, should we? Um.
Because I would think that any savings, I mean, quite honestly, if you're saying the, um, health insurance is twelve and conservatively the other one is, you know, six.
Eighteen.
That's eighteen thousand dollars. Well, that could take something off, off the table here.
A classroom item.
Yes, exactly.
It might, Donna, the, um, health insurance, uh, because we're working the health insurance based on actual payments out right now. We review that every month. So of, some of the health insurance has already been adjusted for. Because we're paying what the actual number of the people that are on the health insurance are on there. So the, um, the salary account, it, it does give you, I'd say it's a safe number on, on the six thousand. There might be more. Uh, and no, it's not in the freeze because at this point, your, your freeze amount of the four hundred thousand dollars is an estimate of your deficit. And you really, we don't have a, a good handle yet on what that final deficit is gonna be. It could be larger, it could be smaller. But each month we go through, we're analyzing that and we'll be reporting to you. Particularly, um, since we're now in the heart of preparing next year's budget. And we're going through each of the line items in the current year's budget and refining a couple of, um, bumps in that. And that will affect the, um, deficit at the end of this year. So we'll be reporting on that when we present the budget to you. Um, and you'll see what I'm talking about when we start to look at the historical spending pattern of past years versus what the number is in the current budget. And some of the numbers just don't correlate. You have higher expenditures and the budget number is lower than what you spent historically in the past couple of years. So with the revised budget format we're gonna give you, you can track yourself and see where, uh, some of the oddities are, you know, in your budget.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we will move on to the budget freeze supply account financials.
And so with this one, uh, there's handouts for board members, handouts for the community as well. And the first page, other than the date of the report on the top, it being eleven-eighteen, the rest of this is the same as what you saw in the last meeting. Just wanna let you know, um, you'll notice the col- columns there are dated October seventh, November fourth. There's probably gonna be more columns as we move through the year. Uh, as one example, with, um, you know, expenditures and maintenance, if we have something we have to repair, we're gonna have to make that repair, and we're gonna have to adjust accordingly. So, um, we'll add the columns as we need to make those adjustments. The place I'd like to draw your attention to is the last page, and that last page has the supplies account details, uh, that, uh, the board had asked about in the last meeting. And, um, as noted in that meeting, it's, uh, elementary and some other departments. And I'll give you just some quick examples of some of the things that are in these lines. So the first one, supplies of technology, that includes things like backup tapes, cabling, uh, discs, USB drive, those kinds of small items, uh, that need to be purchased for the district. Supplies other superintendent includes things like, um, uh, funds for the superintendent of the month, uh, some cave resources, uh, retirement plates, board of ed plates, those kinds of things. And then you'll notice the next three, um, were, uh, zeroed out. Uh, supplies AV technology, uh, is for things like bulbs. Uh, supplies AV reading, reading supplies for, uh, our reading teachers. Uh, library, uh, supplies, things like the binding tape that they use, and those, those kinds of things that they use within the library. Supplies custodial is a really big one. And this one, uh, you'll notice that the cut is relatively small and a big item because it's heavily health and safety. It's heavily, uh, cleaning supplies, it's the kinds of things that are, keep our buildings clean and safe and sanitary. So it's important that we keep sufficient funds there to keep these buildings in good condition and, uh, not have germs spread and things of that like. Supplies maintenance, um, a little bit of a cut there too. Um, that's things like, uh, filters for the HVAC, belts for our HVAC systems, uh, the kinds of things to keep those mechanicals going. Uh, supplies ma- I'm sorry, and then lastly, supply security, which is, uh, items like, um, our ID, uh, cards, um, the swipe cards, uh, disposable items like the sticky, um, uh, tags that, uh, were used for, are used for visitors when they come in. But in looking at that, we felt we had sufficient funds to get us through to the remainder of the year.
All right, Jack, you skipped over other principal office Monroe L., sixty-nine hundred dollars that we wiped out.
Yep, so that would be school supplies, um, things like paper clips and all the kinds of things that are used in terms of, uh, keeping the office going, and I'm sure that's spent on, uh, classrooms as well within the building.
Right, so some of these things touch students like AV reading, library. So I would think those things, and, and you guys determine that these things that, that are supplies for, that directly go to students are non-essential.
We have, the items that we have here are the items that we're using to keep us going. And, uh, these cuts were made so that, and you'll notice that part of it is, in some of these, but not all, there were some expenditures made already, and we're having to live off the items that we have for the time being.
Right. My concern is I don't wanna have another situation where we've had where we're, the board is fielding complaints that, you know, teachers can't buy art supplies.
There's not enough copy paper.
There's not enough copy paper. We can't buy toner. Those are things that are essential that directly affect our students and our students' learning. And, you know, I'm concerned that some of these supplies are things that are essential to our students and our students' learning in the classroom, and I don't wanna be cutting things. These, my, to me, cuts need to be non-essential that don't touch the kids. So, is these things don't touch the kids? Like, this is my concern.
Yeah, and turn, when we sat down as an administrative group and took a look at the places that we could make cuts with, uh, with not having impacts on students, this is one of the places that we did this.
But I would say that reading supplies impacts the students. Uh, you know, others, you know, technology, library stuff affects the students. Like, I don't see how that doesn't affect the students.
Yeah, I, when we sat down as a team, we went through every line in the budget to get us to the, uh, amount we needed to attain, and we sought vigorously to limit impact on students. So that's, that's how we got to the place that we are. Um, if you'd like us to take another look, we can.
I think you need to take another look. I think you need to, again, it should be non-essential stuff that doesn't touch the student.
Okay, yeah, we can take another look and report back to the board on that.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Sure.
So there's specific ones on here. I mean, there's, there's Monroe Elementary, Stephanie, Stephanie Juan Hollow. I guess, I'm, I'm not often saying that, but the schools.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay, so, um, obviously.
What page are you on, George?
He's on a supply page.
Oh, the last one, yeah, that was Monroe's one, yeah.
So, maybe next meeting we could have somebody from those schools come and speak about what actually is taken out.
Mm-hmm.
Right, because you're just looking at a generic line on AV reading. I don't know what that means.
Yep.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
So maybe somebody could just say how, you know, losing that entire budget line, uh, impacts the school.
Okay.
And why they, why we think we can get through without it.
Mm-hmm, okay. So what I hear the board saying, there's two things. One is taking another look at what we have, and part two is reporting out on the items that are in the cuts.
Well, and there, there's a third, and I'm gonna play it from my thirty-four years here. If everybody would look at page three.
Yes.
I've got this airy feeling about me, 'cause I was called into administrative meetings many times about this. So I would assume, Jack, that page three is where the administrators brought in their teams and said, what can you afford not to get for the rest of the year?
Mm-hmm.
I see culinary arts, I see Heck, Heck Ed, I see mu- so is, is that how that lists? I mean, I've sat in that room before, so I'm just wondering, is that what happened?
Sure, yes. All of this, this whole process is collaborative. None of this is done autocratically, so.
No, I, I was call, but I do, I, there was no acute, I wasn't, I was just trying to figure out if that's how it was.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it is, it is value judgments in terms of, okay, where are we gonna have the least impacts to students at the end of the day? So, it's a good faith effort in doing that, and we can absolutely provide the board with more detail around that and take a fresh look at it as well.
Absolutely. David?
Jack, I think what, I think what we're saying too is, we need to buy what we need to buy, but we don't need to buy an extra pallet. You, you know what I mean, to get us through the year. Um, obviously, we wanna minimize hitting the classrooms, like Donna said, a hundred percent.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that we're in such a situation with, with the finances that we, unfortunately, we do need to get down to the nitty-gritty and the line items.
Sure.
So there's a point of ordering what's needed, um, but not ordering extra and surplus.
Mm-hmm. Agreed. If the kids are doing an art project, we need to purchase the art supplies for those projects that the kids are doing.
I was thinking culinary and how they, they provide food for the whole year for things we go to up here. I just wanna make sure they have the material they need.
Right. And, and how do you run a culinary department where you don't have the supplies for the kids to actually learn as part of their curriculum, making the items?
That, that's my point. If they need eggs, you buy them eggs. If you need wood, you buy them wood.
Right.
Right, Dave, no, I do know.
Don't buy the whole Home Depot.
Right, yes, yes, I know exactly.
And it's, you know, it's unfortunate that you have a board of education looking at the minutia of, of every single line item, but that's the, you like that word?
Yeah, I do.
Um, but unfortunately, that's the nickel and diming that, that we're, we're up against right now.
Sure.
And we may not be nickel and diming either. This could be that, you know, we, we were going to do something this year that we didn't do last year, or we're gonna replace something, but now we've decided that we're gonna defer that for another year.
Very true.
So if, if that's the case, I mean, if, if Jockey Hollow, textbooks, math, if, if Jack and Kevin say that they don't need to buy new textbooks this year, then, then they, they don't need to do that this year, and that's a, that's a great opportunity for savings.
Right.
But if it means that we're not gonna be able to teach math this year, then that's a different story. And I don't think that that's what, what we would be doing, right? So I think we just need to maybe get a little insight as to what is, why that cut was chosen, and what's the actual impact. So that if it is zeroed out, we understand that it's, it's okay to be zeroed out this year.
Right. But the other thing we need to, you know, look at, you know, if we need, those textbooks are probably gonna still need to be bought. Are they gonna be bought next year and it's just gonna make the budget even worse, um, from a increase standpoint?
Yeah, actually, Jack could share it on this one at the last board meeting.
It's licenses?
It's the licenses, isn't it?
Yes, yes, it's the licenses.
Right, right.
And I'm just talking in general with all of these things. That's not specific for that.
Kicking the can down the road.
Well, I think what we need across the board, even if it's op plan, we need to have like a three-year look at stuff. We can't just, you know, operate, you know, year-to-year cycle, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I'm sure that that's what the team is doing. They look at the, the, the life expectancy of what we have and, and when we're gonna need new, and they plan that out, and they try to, you know, not have everything fall within one year where it needs to be, you know, uh, procured.
So, um, we'll take a fresh look at this list, see if there's changes we can make. Uh, we'll have reports out to you with, uh, supply accounts for the next meeting.
We also have detailed, the biggest cut item, if you haven't even touched this evening, is a hundred thousand dollars in maintenance.
Yeah, well, he kind of explained to us that we're walking a tightrope until something happens.
Exactly, and we do have a detailed spreadsheet that shows the different things that we have looked at, and we'll provide that to the board so you can see, so that if something goes south, you can see what we, the assumptions we have made.
Right. I think that would be important to provide the detail because this is just a number on a page that really doesn't have any background, any detail, any ex- assumptions to say this is why the cut was made. It's just, hey, we cut five hundred and fifty dollars, it's student agendas. You know, there's no really rationale, explanation, detail, what it actually is. It's just an account and a, and a total.
And Frank, to help with that hundred thousand, Jack last year presented a five-year plan of how old the boilers were, how old the roofs were, how old, so he's got that in his office. He's got the age of every.
We were just working on the update today for us.
That's the capital plan, though.
Yeah.
So for the op plan, we have to kinda look at the same thing. If we're gonna take a huge hit this year, Donna's point is correct, you know, or, or can we look out the next few years and, and readjust our, our operations forecast so that we're not gonna get hit or try to, try to recover all of this next year?
Right.
No, George, I knew it was capital plan, but listen to what, what I'm saying. If the, if, if a unit here is only five years old, my chances of it crashing me fixing it are nothing. But if the unit at Jockey Hollow is twenty years old, then it might go down on me. And if it does, that's part of that one hundred thousand dollars to get it repaired. That's what I was referring to Jack's plan. He's got a sheet of how old everything is, from the central units on the roof to, and that's the sheet we need to see.
Well, yeah, the sheet that, eh, what George was speaking to is, is the capital items. It's really, the really big ones.
I understand, but when a boiler goes down, that's not capital items. That's your item. When you repaired the pool, when the pool went down, was that a capital item?
Which, like.
When a massive pool leaked, was that a capital item?
No.
No, see, that's, that's my point.
No, that's an operating budget.
When I run my, my house now, I know how old the roof is, how old the boiler is, how old. So you can expect that it's gonna happen, but you can expect what to replace. I realize capital, but I realize emergency. And I'm talking about the emergency.
Emergency would be operating. A capital expense would be something that's depreciable.
Right.
Over a length of time. So that would be if you not repaired the boiler, but you replaced the whole boiler.
Right.
Then that would go to capital.
Yes. I'm talking about the repair aspect of it.
Where, so where, how do we budget for repairs? Where do, where do those, the boiler blows up this year?
I, I have a detail by, um, I have detailed spreadsheet we'll send out to you, which shows exactly, um, repairs to the heating system, the air conditioning, the boiler cleaning, plumbing, electrical, uh, field maintenance.
Exactly.
There's a myriad of different accounts. We have it all broken out, where the assumed savings will be. And it will be a good discussion because some of the maintenance items you're doing, um, some of the things are not getting done that should've been done. It should've been done for the last couple of years.
And are you, but are we pulling from those accounts this year?
Well, to make up a hundred thousand, we are tapping out, um, the repairs to vehicles, emergency repairs, um, contractual repairs. I, there's, there's several different areas we use to come up with that eight hundred thousand, and we had to make assumptions to reach four hundred thousand. It was not an easy process. Jack had several meetings with the principals to go over with them, and we revisited several times. Um, and so there's assumptions that's made, and we'll show you the assumptions that were made.
I missed that. I'm sorry, Jerry. Um, my, my point was, you know, you know, if we, uh, I'm, look, I want the administration to look out in terms of operating plan and make sure that we, uh, we have, now, given the cut, we have a contingency plan that we're formulating in order to address these things, uh, over the next few years, and make sure we're not going to, uh, impact other things that we had planned to do three years out. Um, I wasn't aware that, that, you know, we were, we were tapping that much from.
That's what scares me. What scares me, and that's why Frank said what he said.
Well, and that's the problem with just seeing the one number and not really seeing the detail behind the number. But I think, Jerry, you make a really good point. We should have a list of all the difference of equipment that are in the buildings and what their age is and that type of stuff.
Knowing Mr. Gerasko the way I do, and I know him very well, he's a closer, I'm sure he does. I'm sure it's just a matter of him hitting a button, he's got a folder, and I know Bill. Bill's got the ages of probably ev- everything right, right on.
Well, then let's tap Bill and get that stuff so that the board can actually see it and feel it.
Sorry, Bill, I mentioned your name.
All right, so.
Wait, Jeff?
Just a quick question. On that list you have of the items that, for better, we're, we're deferring maintenance to, um, do it, on that spreadsheet, or however it's grouped, is it just last year? Is it going back several years? I guess what I'm asking is, is there any way for us to kinda get an average of what we're spending annually, right, so that we can kind of, to George's point, project potentially, I know we're zeroing it, not, well, we're deferring a hundred thousand dollars, but is there any way to infer from the numbers going back?
We do have, yes, Jeff, we do have the detail of your actual expenditures by these sub-line items. We have financial reports that run a hundred and fifty pages long of every minor sub-line item. Uh, and that's what we are going through right now in the budgetary process. So, yes, we can tell exactly how much has been spent. Uh, the spreadsheet I have right now is the original appropriation, the current year's budget, how much we've spent so far, how much we've encumbered the balance, and how much we're tapping out those individual accounts.
But I, 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 thank you. Uh, I think, actual repairs, you know, in other words, something that's broken and it's fixed, that we can kinda use to say, okay, we can anticipate, you know, maybe there's thirty thousand dollars of repairs that we can kinda say, all right, we really need to have this. And, and you're always gonna have a what-if.
Or emergencies, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or emergency, I mean, just, just to, you know, I mean, it's just a big number.
Oh, oh, it is. It's one lump sum. And, and so, that's why I wanted to bring it up, because we've been discussing some of the smaller numbers, but this is, you know, facilities maintenance is a big issue. And as I get more and more into it, I, I'm seeing things that I'm not happy with regard to your PM program.
Well, I think at minimum, we're, we're looking at what's, what is included in there, 'cause it is just a number on a piece of paper. And we're prioritizing those, the, the parts of that for next year, and then planning out the rest of them beyond that.
All right, so just so I make sure I have it all here. So, fresh look at the cuts, uh, supplies report with detail, um, so reports around that. The, um, uh, heating, ventilation, and cooling equipment, ages and information on that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the, um, repairs detail. So, in terms of, uh, what are the history, what's the history with that, and what are we looking at moving forward?
We can add that right to the spreadsheet, just plug in the history, um, for the last two years, you know, of expenditures.
I mean, there are certain things, like when an elevator goes down in Jockey Hollow, it's got to be repaired instantly. There is no, oh gee, whoa, wait a day.
Right.
There are handicapped children that need that to get up to the second, third floor. So that's a quick call, and that's a, you know, ten thousand dollar bill, five thou- whatever it is, we have to handle it.
Safe, health and safety is, there's no questions about it.
Understood, yes.
Yep.
And well, that's why it's so important to see what the assumptions were as to what is being postponed to total a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, absolutely. This is maintenance, right?
This is repairs.
And these are assumptions, Gary's point as well. If something goes down, we have to take care of it.
Right.
And so we made certain assumptions, and we'll show this to the board, the assumptions that were made based on the best local knowledge that we have.
Right, right. And I think looking, a fresh look is important because, again, I'll go back to this whole essential versus non-essential. Supplies and things that. Supplies and things that touch the kids are essential, that we need. David.
Frank, another quick question. Do you have a list of service contracts, maintenance contracts? Like, do we have, like Jerry said, the elevator? Like, do we have an agreement with that company? We pay X amount a year and it covers, you know, maintenance?
I haven't looked at it, but we should have.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tyson, Tyson.
There's a whole host of inspections that are done from the elevator to the emergency lighting system.
Right, right.
And Bill handles that, but we can see what contracts we have with the different, you know, with the different vendors. But he's on top of the things that were required by law to do.
Oh, he's got it on, I knew it to you, he's got it all.
They say, I have not, I have not looked at that.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm just hearing a concern. We want to save money, but we don't want to defer maintenance that's, that's going to cost us a boiler, you know, next year.
It's like, if there's an AC unit on the roof, we used to hire a company to go and change every belt. Now, change the belts that aren't working instead of changing all the belts.
Well, to Frank's point, right, preventative maintenance.
PM program, you know, and, and there's been some slippage in your PM program.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, we'll have those items for the next meeting.
Is this applicable to the computers as well? I know when we did our tour, the engineering classroom in sixth grade, those computers were like 10 years old.
Absolutely. Matter of fact, I just had a phone conversation with Mike Manjos today. And he, he was good again about the town picking up the refresh of devices. Yeah, so what that includes right now is our PC labs are really old. So some of the worst are here at Masick, they'll be replaced. One at STEM is very old, that'll be replaced. And then Chromebook refresh, those Chromebooks that will stop updating. There's a segment that will be replaced there as well.
Okay, so those 10-year-old computers are going to be taken care of?
I don't know specifically which one you're talking about over at Jockey Hollow.
I remember the class where the kids make their engineering books and they go on CAD.
Mm-hmm. I'm not sure if that one's in the list, so it might be, if they're updatable.
Is that at Jockey Hollow?
Lee, Mike?
It's on, it's Nick's.
Oh, Nick's is on the list. Yeah, Nick's is on the list, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, does anybody have anything else? Anything else before we move to adjournment because we have no new business? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Jerry. Second, thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.